Six o'clock, are we ready in the chambers?
Yes, Mayor, we're ready whenever you are.
Okay, so let's do three, two, one, and we now call this meeting to order. If you could please pay attention to Councilwoman Valdivia Alcala for the invocation, to be followed by the pledge of allegiance. Even if you're home, please rise if you're able.
Thank you, Mayor. This is going to be a small reading from the Book of Proverbs, Chapter 8, verses 1 through 11. Does not wisdom call, does not understanding raise her voice? On the heights beside the way, at the crossroads she takes her stand, beside the gates in front of the town. At the entrance of the portals she cries aloud. To you, O men, I call, and my cry is to the children of men. O simple ones, learn prudence; O fools, learn sense. Hear, for I will speak noble things, and from my lips will come what is right, for my mouth will utter truth. Wickedness is an abomination to my lips. All the words of my mouth are righteous; there is nothing twisted or crooked in them. They are all straight to him who understands, and right to those who find knowledge. Take my instruction instead of silver, and knowledge rather than choice gold. For wisdom is better than jewels, and all that you may desire cannot compare with her. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We now move on to the roll call.
Mayor De La Isla?
Here.
Councilmembers Hiller?
Here.
Valdivia Alcala?
Here.
Ortiz?
Here.
Emerson?
Here.
Padilla?
Here.
Nager?
Here.
Dobler?
Here.
Duncan?
Here.
And Lesser?
Here.
We have 10 present.
We now move on to the proclamations. I know that Brenda has the document, and I think that Chief Duke and Marshal Harrison are going to be here. There's two proclamations for this evening. If the chief could come up front, that way he could make a few remarks after I read the proclamation. So it says, whereas fire is a serious public safety concern both locally and nationally, and while our homes are the locations where people are at a greatest risk from fire, these fire emergencies can happen anywhere. And whereas fires in the city of Topeka have killed 11 people in the last five years, and the Topeka Fire Department has responded to over 786 structure fires in the last five years. And whereas the Topeka Fire Department, with the support of the American Cross, installs free smoke alarms and inspects hundreds of commercial structures annually in order to keep citizens safe. And whereas the city of Topeka firefighters are dedicated to reducing the occurrence of fire injuries through the prevention, protection, community risk reduction projects, and education. And whereas the 2020 Fire Prevention Week theme is Serve Fire Safety in the Kitchen. And now, therefore, I, Mayor Michelle De La Isla of the city of Topeka, Kansas, do hereby proclaim the week of October 4th through the 10th, 2020, as Fire Prevention Week. Chief, talk to us about serving up fire safety in the kitchen.
Thank you, Mayor, you don't want me in the kitchen. I will take my mask off if you can't understand what I said, but I was told as soon as I take my mask off, you won't understand what I'm saying anyway. But I would like to thank Councilwoman Ortiz, as she is a big advocate of Fire Prevention Week, smoke alarms, and so forth. But to discuss in a little bit more detail, there's our new Foreign Marshal, Todd Harrison, who has a few words to say.
Thank you, Chief. One of the reasons we picked safety in the kitchen is 44% of all home fires start in the kitchen. This is the reason it's imperative, everybody knows this. Just a few helpful tips that I'd like to present is if you're in the kitchen and you're cooking, definitely stay in the kitchen. Try to avoid going and watching television, starting a hobby. Definitely want to make sure whatever you're doing in there, you're focused on paying attention to it. The other point is if you're tired, definitely don't go to sleep while you're cooking. Take any types of medications, I would avoid that. Definitely want to stay awake for anything to avoid any dangers. And lastly, you want to make sure you've got a kid-free zone right there in the kitchen, three feet away from the oven, or the coffee pot, or anything that would be boiling water. It's imperative that we keep our kids safe at all costs. And this is a perfect time, this time of the year, to test your smoke detectors. Definitely, if they're having problems, change out the battery. And in the back, back here, we've got smoke detector applications. And you can also get on the Topeka website and print out those whenever you need them. Thank you very much.
Councilwoman Ortiz, I know that you're probably going to want to say a few words about Fire Prevention Week, and how do you keep it safe in the kitchen?
Well, Mayor, I guess that cliche, if you can't stand the heat, get out the kitchen. You know, I thought about that when he said that. So I don't like to go in the kitchen, I'll get out. But I will say before my remarks, but I think it's very important, this is an important month for fire and safety, so we can get the word out there, and the rest I will respond during my remarks. So I'm just glad that October is here, and everybody can search their batteries, and I've got some other things for you to search. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
All right. Thank you so much, gentlemen, for your commitment, you know, of safety in our community, and making sure that we educate our public on how to remain safe and avoid fires. So thank you. The next proclamation, if we could have Ms. Commissioner Bab and Commissioner Hop to stand up, so that we are able to read the proclamation for Hispanic Heritage Month. And the proclamation reads, whereas September 15th and October 15th through October 15th celebrates Hispanic Heritage Month, and the 16th of September celebrates Mexican Independence Day, on this date in 1810. Whereas the city of Topeka is greatly enriched by the large numbers of persons of Hispanic descent who have made Topeka their home. And whereas Topeka residents treasure the colorful Hispanic-American culture and traditions that have become a part of Topeka's heritage. And whereas the city of Topeka affirms the principles of equality and inclusion of persons of Hispanic descent as set laws in the state of Kansas and ordinance of Topeka. Now, therefore, I, Michelle De La Isla, Mayor of the city of Topeka, Kansas, do hereby proclaim September 15th through October 15th, 2020, Hispanic Heritage Month. If you could say a few words.
Wonderful. So across the United States, we have a lot of Hispanics celebrating and, you know, taking pride of their food, their music shows. We have people like Jennifer Lopez, Sonia Sotomayor, Alexandra Ocasio, who have Hispanic background. And we have September 15th to October 15th to celebrate those individuals, and not only them, but the people of Topeka. And we are proud to have our first Latina mayor here, and we're also really proud to be represented well in the city council with a few council members that are of Latino or Hispanic heritage. So I'm very proud of that. I feel that it's very important that we celebrate this, and we take proud of the Hispanic and Latino community here in Topeka. There's about 53 million, approximately 53 million people of Hispanic or Latino heritage in the United States. And Hispanics form the biggest minority group in America, and it's about 17% of the population. So I feel like it's a good, it's a good show of our inclusion in Topeka, that we're having this month dedicated to us. And I thank Mayor De La Isla and the city council for letting us have this celebration as part of the Topeka Human Relations Commission. So thank you so much.
Thank you very much. At this point in time, we are done with proclamations, and it's time for us to go into Item 3D appointments. If the clerk could read.
Item 3A is Advisory Council Appointment of Marilyn Lind to the City of Topeka, Americans with Disabilities Act Advisory Council for a term ending September 30th, 2022. Item 3B is a board appointment recommending the reappointment of Wiley Canar to the Topeka Planning Commission for a term ending September 30th, 2023. And 3C is a board appointment recommending the reappointment of Mike Frye to the Topeka Planning Commission for a term ending September 30th, 2023.
We have heard the appointments, what is the desire of the body? Deputy Mayor moves to approve. Do we have a second? Councilwoman Nager, seconds. Comments or questions with regards to the appointments? Seeing none, we proceed by voting through roll call. Mayor does not vote.
Councilmembers Hiller?
Yes.
Valdivia Alcala?
Yes.
Ortiz?
Yes.
Emerson?
Yes.
Padilla?
Yes.
Nager?
Yes.
Dobler?
Yes.
Duncan?
Yes.
And Lesser?
Yes.
We have nine yeses.
Nine having voted yes, the motion carries. At this point in time, we move on to item four, the consent agenda. If the clerk would read.
Item 4A are the minutes of the regular meeting of September 15th, 2020, and there are no applications.
What is the pleasure of the body?
Need approval.
Councilwoman Dobler moves approval. Do we have a second? Councilwoman Nager, seconds. Comments or questions with regards to the consent agenda? Seeing none, we vote by roll call.
Mayor De La Isla?
Yes.
Councilmembers Hiller?
Yes.
Valdivia Alcala?
Yes.
Ortiz?
Yes.
Emerson?
Yes.
Padilla?
Yes.
Nager?
Yes.
Dobler?
Yes.
Duncan?
Yes.
And Lesser?
Yes.
We have 10 yeses.
Ten having voted yes, the motion carries. We now move on into the action items. Action item A, if the clerk would read.
Item 5A is approval of the sale of city of Topeka surplus property located at 101 Northeast Jefferson to Amherst Holdings LLC in the amount of $2,000.
City Manager?
Thank you, Mayor. Tonight, this item is brought before you for consideration. The proposed sale of the property will allow 9 refrigeration that is purchasing the land to extend their building. We have negotiated a price of $2,000 for the sale of this property. Parking area is very rarely used and is not needed by the city according to all staff reviews. Were available for questions. Ed Colazo is available also on Zoom if needed.
Questions for our team? Councilman Duncan?
All right, I have a few, whether they're to you or Mr. Colazo, you'll let me know, I guess. So how do we, in this case, determine sale price?
Ed, do you want to go ahead and cover? You worked with them on that sale price?
Sure, I'll be happy to. The appraised, Shawnee County Appraised Value of the property was $1,000 for many, many years, and just recently, this year, it was appraised at $7,000. I found that pretty curious, so I called the Shawnee County Appraisers Office and asked, and their response was that they had not been keeping up the way they should have with exempt properties, and they were making an effort to try to keep up with exempt properties. So this year, it went from $1,000 appraised value last year to $7,000 this year. However, taken into consideration what Amherst Holdings is trying to do and expand their current property, and that would add more construction and more jobs to our economy, I thought that this would be a fair price to pay for this six parking spots that we're not currently using.
So then, when we make that decision, is there any, any contract? Once we sell it, did we put anything in that contract that says if they don't develop it, and three years from now, it's still a parking lot, since we've, we're giving essentially a $5,000 discount? And I'm all for the development, and I assume it's going back on the tax rolls, which is great. So I mean, I understand that. And I guess I'm not just asking for this, I guess as we look at things moving forward, I mean, if they don't build it, are we then just have, still have a parking lot there that we undersold value for, I guess? I mean, that's my concern, and like I said, not just here, but that we at least take a look at some of those things moving forward. If we're going to give the discounts, awesome. Back on the tax rolls, great. But I do have concerns that if then that development doesn't happen, we've undersold ourselves, so.
I think that in some cases, we do, we can put clauses in our sale agreement with them that requires that to happen. I've seen that in other, in other opportunities. I think in this case, we weren't looking at that based on the sale price and what was involved. Didn't feel that that was necessary clause to do, so that would be my answer. We do look at that.
And then this will then, I assume, go right back on the tax rolls? There's no tax breaks or anything? Great, awesome, thank you.
Other questions? Councilman Dobler?
I may have missed in all the descriptions, but how did we come about owning that property and six parking stalls?
Ed, do you know, I think what I recall is that it was part of a project, if you look at where the street runs in that area, there's some maneuvering of right-of-way, and I think it was a leftover remnant, based on the way the street works down there. And I don't know exactly why it turned into a parking lot, per se, but I think that's how we acquired the property, is because of right-of-way acquisition.
Additional?
Thanks.
Additional comments or questions for teams? Okay, seeing none, what is the pleasure of the body? Councilwoman Ortiz moves for approval. Do we have a second? Councilwoman Deja seconds the motion. Additional comments or questions before we proceed with the vote? Councilman Emerson?
Thank you, Mayor. I don't know that it's a conflict, but I'm just looking through, I just noticed the gentleman who owns this is a guy, a friend of mine, so I'm going to abstain from voting on this.
Thank you very much. Anybody else? Any comments? Seeing none, we vote by roll call.
Mayor De La Isla?
Yes.
Councilmember Hiller?
Yes.
Valdivia Alcala?
Yes.
Ortiz?
Yes.
Emerson?
Abstain.
Padilla?
Yes.
Nager?
Yes.
Dobler?
Yes.
Duncan?
Yes.
And Lesser?
Yes. I was glad to know that Tony has at least one friend.
We have nine yeses.
Nine having voted yes, the motion carries. We now move on to ordinance B, item B of the clerk would read.
5B is an ordinance introduced by City Manager Brent Trout concerning stormwater regulations, amending various sections in Chapter 13.25, 13.35, 17.10, 17.30, and 18.235 of the Topeka Municipal Code, repealing original sections and creating Chapter 13.40.
City Manager?
Thank you, Mayor. The ordinance was presented at our September 15th meeting. Follow-up discussions have occurred with various governing body members, and tonight we seek your support for approval of the ordinance. Braxton Copley does have some other additional information that he'll go through with you tonight, to sort of provide a summary of the key components of the ordinance. Braxton?
Thank you, good evening, Mayor and City Council. I trust that you can hear me fine.
Yes.
Just wanted to take a minute and just kind of do a quick and dirty overview. Again, the reason that we're here is because in April of 2018, the EPA did an inspection and review our stormwater management process. About a year later, in May of 2019, the EPA provided us with an agreed-upon order of consent in draft form, and we spent several months negotiating the terms of that. In August, we were able to finally come to an agreement, and we have the executed agreed-upon order of consent. To date, we have completed all items under that agreement, with the exception of making revisions to the ongoing maintenance inspection of post-construction BMPs. One of the items that the ordinance covers that's in front of you is specifically to address those concerns raised by the EPA. I have provided you with the summary of the changes, and I'm not going to repeat everything that I had provided in that, but I would gladly stand for any questions that you have, and I would respectfully request the governing body to approve the ordinance so that we can fully comply with the AOC with agreed-upon order of consent. We did receive permission and extension from the EPA through October after our September 15th meeting. I know there were some council members that were very concerned about the fact that at that time, we only had permission for extension through September. EPA has agreed to extend through October. I'll gladly stand for any questions.
Any questions for Braxton? I know we do have somebody, oh, Councilman Duncan?
No, well, we can do public comment first, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, that's what I was going to, we do have Mr. Joe Ledbetter standing for public comment.
Thank you, everybody. I stand opposed to passing this tonight. I think that you need a real total overview of what happened. I was just looking at the original potential violations that were cited to the city, there were nine of them back in April of 18. Three, actually, only two of them talk about anything to do with private development. The city failed to list industrial facilities that had potential problems, so that's industrial, not residential, not commercial. The city failed to annually inspect at least two facilities that they had on their list of concern that they knew about. And then you go through three through nine, and I hope you all have this, this should have been part of the record three weeks ago. They all talk about publicly-owned property that they want you to do a little more scrutiny on, including municipal-owned property. So, you know, to me, what we, what we got here a few years ago, because we're not communicating with council and actually including the governing body in our problems, from what I can see, is we got a tempest in a teapot. And I just want to show you what, don't count the ledger book, what $380,000, $380,710 looks like. This is the contract for the, the actual work that was done by this engineering firm from out of town. I didn't know why we couldn't have had our own legal department draft an ordinance, since on the website, they say that that's part of their duties. And I also didn't understand why they are getting a transfer from the general administrative fee that comes off utilities of a quarter million a year, and why they couldn't have done that work themselves in-house, or at least with the legal department, or at least most of it. Now, nobody's going to say that they couldn't have asked for some outside expertise, lawyers do that. But to tell me that we need to spend that kind of money to draft this, and then there's a lot of other things in it that I won't have time to go into. I did send it, I sent these documents, I forwarded them to at least five of the council members, hopefully I got more of you. One of the documents says that we're paying $95,000 for a handbook. Well, I was looking at the handbook, and that was interesting, because I kind of went over some of the things that occurred out at our own, very own, stormwater pit in Gage Park, and it says that these devices are not supposed to have more than a one, more than a 33%, steepness of the bank, not more than that. And a lot of people have told me they believe that's between 60 and 70% steepness. It's not supposed to have water in it, because that presents a waterfowl problem, which presents a problem of them doing things in the water that creates bacteria. So if we're not even going to follow what we're supposedly proposing as a city when we build things, how are we putting this onerous requirement on all of our developers to go forth with these kinds of onerous ordinances? And I will tell you that I looked for developers in any of these lists, I did not see them. I saw a lot of design people make money off these types of devices and types of designs, but there was only two meetings I could find in all the cores that I filed, and I filed several of them. They're pretty complete. And what troubles me is just the lack of real public input, not, not from developer firms, not from, I'm sorry, from developer firms, not from design firms, but from developers.
Mr. Ledbetter, do you need additional time?
Well, let me wrap it up with one minute, if that's okay with the governing body.
We have a motion and a second. Motion by Councilman Lesser, second by the deputy mayor. We proceed to vote by roll call, to extend for one minute.
Mayor De La Isla?
Yes.
Councilmembers Hiller?
Yes.
Valdivia Alcala?
Yes.
Ortiz?
Yes.
Emerson?
Yes.
Padilla?
Yes.
Nager?
Yes.
Dobler?
Yes.
Duncan?
Yes.
And Lesser?
Yes.
We have 10 yeses.
You may proceed, Mr. Ledbetter.
Thank you. And not to embarrass anybody here, but Mr. Dobler, I think, has worked on stormwater-type devices and ordinances for at least 20 years. I don't know why you couldn't have just conferred with him. But that's just me, as a taxpayer who wants to be very frugal with our money, especially in light of huge water increases that are coming at the end of the year, from these very utility studies and all of these rates that we're passing. I guess what I'm asking the council is do the fiduciary duty that's required of you, start really deeply examining what's brought before you. Do not approve or do not allow anybody to sign contracts without your approval of at least $50,000 or more. I have seen three contracts in the last few months that I filed cores on, I personally would have never signed if I'd had that authority. And, and they're all based on utilities and utility expenditures, and I think we have enough in-house knowledge to do a lot of the, oh, my time's up, that we could have done a lot of this in-house. Anyway, thank you for your time, and...
Mayor, I have a question.
Thank you for your comments. Mr. Duncan?
No.
Oh, Councilwoman Valdivia Alcala?
Of Joe. So if you had to ballpark it, you're saying that, you know, you need to do fiduciary duty, et cetera, et cetera, how much do you think was overspent, just with what you're bringing out? How much do you believe that the city overspent on this?
Okay, now, you're asking me a question that is going to be needed to be in fact, but I will, I will tell you what I think my opinion is.
A guess.
Okay? So I'm going to clarify that, since I'm a lawyer.
Right.
I will tell you that this $380,000, I see no reason to spend it. I think we have legal staff that can write ordinances, I think we have enough in-house and... legal staff that can write ordinances. I think we have enough in-house knowledge of stormwater ordinances that we could have done this in-house. Now, if I wanted to just be liberal and say, okay, you could have spent something, you know, at the most, $50,000 to $60,000, but I will tell you, my concern with the stuff I'm seeing, and I've only filed cores on three contracts in the last, what, six months, I am very concerned with what else I'm missing and the council's missing. Because I think that when I walk across the streets of the county commission, you'll see them argue over $5,000. Okay? I think that's way too low. But I think when we're not, when we don't know what our staff is spending in excess of a $50,000 contract, and we find it out through cores by citizens' core request, I think that it opens us up to, we need to do a lot more scrutiny. Now, that's just my opinion, and the council can do what it wants, but I will tell you that you're the board of directors. You're in charge of everything down here. You do defer to professional staff, but at no point do you leave yourselves of those responsibilities of oversight. So, I think I've answered the question as best I can.
Thank you.
On short notice. Okay. Thank you.
Councilman Duncan?
I have one question and one comment. Braxton, I guess this is due. Is the, there's a structure behind, on Silver Lake Road, behind where they built the Loves. Maybe you know what I'm talking about. Is that a BMP?
I believe that what you're talking about is the detention facility behind Loves, or that would be technically a BMP. That is designed for water retention, because in North Topeka, that is an area that's very prone to flooding, and so we have, as part of our design criteria, that we will require that they be able to retain on-site the 100-year storm event. And then to meet the level of service required for water quality requirements, they needed to vegetate that to provide the water quality, basically the rapid transportation and the filtration of nutrients and sediments.
So, that would fall, that would have fallen, or did fall, under this. I guess that's the short, and I'm not really going to pick on that one. I just, I'm going to use it as a reference point for my comment. That's why I'm asking.
So, yes, but again, the starting point is, this ordinance would go into effect January 1st. So, the new requirements relating to the biennial inspection and the inspection once every six years via PE would not apply to that one, because that one would effectively be grandfathered in. But of course, the design criteria for quantity and quality is already in place.
Right. And I understand that. Here's my comment, and I guess, I know that this increases the landscape requirements slightly to get additional points based on the landscape. I guess what I would like to see, and I won't ask that it be put into here tonight, but I guess I'd like to have a discussion, or I will bring something eventually, but I'd rather work with staff to do it, is, I mean, for instance, that is not a pretty-looking structure. And I'm sure it's functional, and I'm sure it meets requirements, but it is unsightly, and I understand that. But at some point, I don't want to see that kind of structure built in the middle of a neighborhood on a private area if it needs to be. I mean, I would like to see us have some better landscaping, aesthetic requirements for some of these projects, if we can do that, to meet some sort of minimum threshold, just so we don't end up with more of these, which we want, but not looking, you know, sort of awful. I guess that would be my, so I guess my only request and comment is, I would like to have that conversation and start some discussion about that, and maybe there's something we could do sooner rather than later about increasing that component of these. But I won't hold this up for that, but I'd like to have that conversation moving forward a little bit.
I would welcome the opportunity to have that conversation with you and to have a larger one globally about BMP design and structures. And I will say that the appropriate location to put that, if you're going to try to add aesthetic concerns relating to stormwater structures, would be in the Stormwater Design Handbook, and would not be in the ordinance or the city code.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilwoman Valdivia Alcala to be followed by Councilman Dobler.
Thank you, Mayor. Spencer, if that would include your dialogue with anything that has to do with that particular area in, behind Loves, just let me know, because I'd love to go for a drive-along. And Braxton, if we could make that happen, I, you know, that would be wonderful. But the other question I had about this is this $380,000 that Mr. Ledbetter is referencing, that it sounds like was spent with an outside entity to draft, to craft the ordinance. City manager, is that correct?
I'll let Braxton, he worked on that contract, and so I'll let him cover what was covered by that, and it'd be the appropriate person to answer that question.
Thank you.
So, I respectfully disagree with Mr. Ledbetter's framing of the issue. When you look overall at that contract, it wasn't just to write an ordinance. That contract was to provide an in-depth review and analysis of our MS4 program. So, it was to go in and look at our existing permit. They provided us with assistance in negotiating our new MS4 permit. They went in and they did an extensive code analysis, basically reviewed every code section that we had that could potentially infringe upon stormwater. So, they looked at all of our zoning regulations. They looked at our requirements relating to parking lots and make sure that there were no conflicts. In addition to that, they prepared that very lengthy technical BMP handbook. They also prepared the property owner's maintenance guide with all of the worksheets in there. The level of effort in this contract was substantial, and I absolutely stand by our decision to hire an extremely qualified outside consultant that we did through a competitive RFP process to provide us with the technical expertise. They do this nationwide. We relied very heavily on them. I am pleased with our overall professional level of the product that we have, and also, we had the design community in for those two workshops. They assisted us with the presentations of those. So, I absolutely stand behind it. It was the right decision to make it, and I believe that the city got its money's worth out of that contract. Further, I'll just point out that under our existing framework, with the City Manager Council from the government, the city manager is authorized to execute contracts on behalf of the city, and the city manager did. Unlike the county commission, which require all contracts to go in front of that governing body, our funding government does not require that.
Okay. And one more question. Was she the consultant, was she the woman that presented at the last meeting that went over numerous steps about what all of this process?
That was one of the consultant team from Wood, the lady that did the presentation last week. Yes.
Okay. Just wanted to confirm. Thank you, Braxton.
Councilman Dobler?
Thank you, Mayor. Braxton, are we proposing anything in this action tonight that's over and above what's required by the EPA consent decree?
In my opinion, no. And again, that's why we rely very heavily on Wood. It does this nationwide. They're looking at other jurisdictions of what the EPA is required. And what we are proposing here is basically what the EPA, to satisfy the EPA fund under the AOC in terms of the ongoing maintenance and inspection of the BMPs.
So, just to make sure I understand this, the EPA, over, what, the last few years, has shown up in Topeka, filed complaints, or done inspections, or whatever their mechanism is, have essentially cited the city of Topeka for not having proper stormwater protection, whether through ordinances or other things. The city negotiated with the EPA a consent decree which has been signed. Is that correct?
That is correct.
And now, we basically have no choice but to fulfill the terms of that consent decree, which, as I understand, this ordinance does. Is that correct?
That is correct.
I guess you can argue how we got to where we are, whether we could have picked another consultant, whether we could have spent less money. I think those are all questions that can be answered over time. But I think the essential argument here is, we don't have much choice. So, I'll be in support of this tonight. Thank you.
Additional comments or questions for staff? Councilwoman Hiller?
Just a question to frame this. I know, for instance, the zoo is on tonight, and they get regular, periodic visits for their accreditation and certification. Is this EPA visit something that is a routine periodically? And if so, is it common to get written up for things based on the way, on either failings or just because regulations have changed? Can you, can you frame that, this process for us? I was thinking Braxton, but whoever you would direct.
Thank you, council member. I was just conferring with Deputy Director Davis. The EPA routinely comes in and audits our performance across the broad range of utilities, water, wastewater, and stormwater. The last pointed inspection and citation for stormwater was back in approximately 2009, 2010, which led to the last major, major revision relating to stormwater. So, it's been almost probably eight years between the major audit and review by the EPA of our municipal separate storm sewer program. But we, the KDHE, on an annual basis, is regulating us and inspecting, as well as the EPA, again, across the wide range of utilities, water, wastewater, and stormwater.
And within that, if I may, it was just, I guess any answer's okay, but sometimes the regulations have changed, and those inspections point up things that weren't even a requirement the time before. Sometimes municipality has, or utility has failed at its responsibilities, and I was, do you know, we had a number of sightings, so maybe there are different reasons for different ones, but I just wondered in general whether we've fallen down on the job or whether things just changed.
No, I firmly believe that the EPA continues to ratchet up the pressure and to move the mark, to continue to force us and other municipalities to increase our ability to monitor and regulate. It's a never-ending, they're constantly pushing the edge of the envelope in terms of regulations are only getting more stringent in terms of water quality, and that's across the board. I mean, we're under a new permit on wastewater, requiring phosphorus and nitrogen removal. On the water side, they put us into a more strict bin related to cryptosporidium. They're coming out with new regulations relating to drinking water on the lead and copper rule. I mean, it's just, it's a continual push. So, I don't, this is not something that the city of Topeka did wrong. This is something that the EPA is pushing us, wanting us to get to that next level.
Thank you.
Other comments and questions? Deputy Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, like Councilman Dobler, you do kind of feel like you're doing this with a gun, you know, to your head. And I know, I know Mr. Copley and then Ms. Davis, too, their WPC, or excuse me, utilities, are having the same thing. This is nothing any of us want to do. This is a, I'm trying to think of something that I can say in public. It's, I can't think of a good word, but it's, it's very disappointing. The EPA keeps pushing this stuff down our throat. I mean, in all of our projects, we spend so much money on erosion control stuff, and if anybody goes down to our river, look at how, our river is a mud and dirt river. Nothing is ever going to hurt, you know, some siltation going into our river. And it is, we, I don't know what the city spends on erosion control year-on-year projects. It's probably an excess of a million dollars. And frankly, I think a lot of it is money wasted. I agree with a lot of what Mr. Ledbetter says. It's, I guess the nice thing I can say is, it sucks, because we're in a position where we had to spend the money. We have a gun to our head. So, I will reluctantly support this as well, but I do appreciate Mr. Ledbetter's questions, and I do also appreciate the work of staff on this. It sucks. It stinks. It's better work.
Okay. I think there's a reason that Braxton said the dirty work. So, that being said, if there is no other questions, we would proceed. Do we have a motion, actually? No? Okay. So, we have a motion by Councilman Dobler, seconded by Councilwoman Nager. Additional comments or questions? We proceed voting by roll call. This is a home rule issue, so the mayor does not vote.
Councilmembers Hiller?
Yes.
Valdivia Alcala?
Yes.
Ortiz?
Yes.
Emerson?
Yes.
Padilla?
Yes.
Nager?
Yes.
Dobler?
Yes.
Duncan?
Yes.
And Lesser?
Yes.
We have nine yes.
Nine having voted yes, the motion passes. We now move on to the non-action items. The first one of those is item A. If the clerk would read.
Item 6A is Discussion of Funding Recommendations by the Alcohol and Drug Abuse Advisory Council in the Amount of $620,000 for the 2021 Special Alcohol Fund.
City manager, do we have Max Wilson here to speak to us tonight?
No, unfortunately, Max is not able to join us tonight, so Cory Wright, our Director of Housing Services, will be filling in for him. She'll make the presentation on the recommendations for funding from the council. So, turn it over to Cory.
Good evening, governing body. Tonight's presentation, as the mayor has said, is normally held by the Topeka-Shawnee County Alcohol and Drug Abuse Advisory Council members. In particular, Max Wilson or John Homlich would normally lead the discussion. They're both unavailable due to health issues, and our department wishes them both a speedy recovery. The city has estimated that $620,000 will be available for the Special Alcohol and Drug Abuse Fund in 2021. This is an amount projected on the liquor tax collected by the state of Kansas and required to be allocated to alcohol and drug programs. An RFP was released, and four agencies applied with a total of five programs, as described in your packet. Prevention and Recovery Services had two programs, Community Prevention Program of $173,000, and Substance Abuse Evaluation and Intervention Program at $58,183. Third Judicial District's Drug Treatment Court of $43,000, and Kansas Children's Service League's Drug Endangered Children Case Management Service is at $14,000. Vallejo Recovery Social Detox Program at $285,275. And the Alcohol Drug Abuse Advisory Council wanted to roll over some mini-grant funds of $21,542, and this is to roll over mainly due to COVID and the lack of funds that we might see in the next year. And so, we wanted, they wanted the ability to roll that over. In your packet, you have a description of each of those programs with their funding amounts. Each application was scored individually by the reviewers. The review committee met several times to discuss the applications and to come up with a cumulative score for each application. Since there was more money available than what was requested by the agency, each program was granted their requests for funding. There were two programs that tied with the highest scores. They were each granted an extra $12,500. The balance was requested to roll forward, as discussed, to the 2020 budget as a safety net due to COVID. The Shawnee County Alcohol and Drug Advisory Council approved the review committee recommendation at their August 2020 monthly meeting, and with that, I'll stand for any questions you might have.
Questions for Cory? Councilman Duncan?
Thank you very much, Cory. In the rollover...
Thank you very much, Cory. In the rollover section of $21,542, $11,500 of that is designated for capital improvement grants. Do we know any examples of what sort of, what that would be spent on? Are we talking purchases of equipment or are we talking actual brick and mortars? I mean...
So Councilmember Duncan, that, that capital improvement grant would be for facility improvements on a building that was providing drug and alcohol assistance.
Okay.
So yes, bricks, more bricks and mortar.
Okay. I mean, and then when they requested the designated amount, there's this quote-unquote "additional," it's hard to say, additional funds these days. That's not a real thing, but that's okay. Did we go back and ask them how they wanted to designate those funds? Or did we make a determination as to how those funds should be designated?
So despite me delivering the details tonight, they made all the decisions on this. The city was just a part of relaying the message back to council on what that review committee and the Special Alcohol and Drug Advisory Council says. This is, was a cumulative response of what the Special Alcohol and Drug Advisory Council wanted.
Okay, great. Yeah, I just wanted to make sure they had input on that $21,000. Thank you.
Absolutely. Hundred percent, yes.
Other comments or questions? Okay, this is just a discussion item. It will be brought up on our agenda next meeting for approval. If there is no other comments or questions, we move on to the next item, item B. If the clerk would read.
Item 6B is discussion regarding the annexation ordinance for property located at the southwest corner of Northwest 25th Street and Northwest Button Road, 6-0 North subdivision within unincorporated Shawnee County, Kansas, and adjacent to the city of Topeka, Corporate Limons Shawnee County, Kansas.
City Manager?
Thank you, Mayor. Tonight, Bill Feinder, Director of Planning and Development, will present information regarding this proposed annexation in the north side. Bill?
Thank you, Mr. City Manager. Good evening, governing body. This discussion item, as you heard, involves an annexation, and we always like to walk you through this before we go to action. This is a fairly significant one. This is, oh, this is not it. Wow. That is in the city. That was our last zoning case. Let me just...
Hold on. There we go. How I got the, does that sound it? That's the one that I just pulled from the email. That's the one that I...
I sent it over today.
Yeah, this is the one that I just saved.
Yeah, yeah. What is that? What was?
This?
Mm-hmm. No, that's okay. All right. Well, that's okay. Oh, that's fine. That's fine. I will, I will...
Sorry about that.
Illustrate. It's basically without the aerial tonight. You would have seen, you would have seen that this is a 74-acre tract located at the northwest corner of Button Road and Highway 24. And it is a currently undeveloped tract. The owner of the, of the tract is proposing more of a speculative development right now for industrial, light industrial office warehouse type uses that would be of a smaller nature, more of a subdivision, if you will, of smaller developments. If you've been up there and you've driven along north of 25th Street on Button Road, it's kind of like that. There's, there's several industries that have popped up along that road, so of a small to medium nature. So that is the, that is the vision for the property owner. Our job is to then assess this against our, our land use and growth management plan, which is our guide for physical footprint for the city and where our services are most efficiently provided. So the rule of thumb for that is really, are there, are city services, can they be affordably provided? Are they there? Or can they be made to be there in the very short future? And does it make us more dense, compact, and urbanized? And this particular property is in our, what we call our urban growth area. It is contiguous to the city, but we do plan for, for expansion of, of those limits, city limits. And we've already pre-planned, basically. That's what the urban growth area is. It says, hey, if you are contiguous and you're in that urban growth area, particularly in this instance, we call it an employment tier, which is planned for industrial uses in the, in the future. If you are in that area, you're contiguous, and we have all the services we can provide in an affordable manner, then it checks those boxes and makes it consistent with our, with our framework for our physical footprint. So that's the case here. The, the main infrastructure-type issue would be, will they have to extend the sewer into the area? The sewer is nearby. It does have to be extended by the developer in the future. The streets would also need to be improved, more than likely. Button Road, Northwest 25th are two streets that are bound this property. And so the plat that was approved for this property has a condition. And once they come back to develop and submit development plans, there would be a traffic, traffic impact analysis to determine the type of improvement. So we want to scale it for the type of, the scale of that development. So if it's a large, larger development with more traffic intensity, then there will be an expectation that might require them to improve the roads accordingly. So that is built in, so that's kind of baked into our development conditions for this property. So even though the roads are not in what we would call urbanized standard, they would be measured when that development comes to be in that, that manner. So our process is pretty straightforward. We, staff reviews, we do a cost-benefit analysis, which is in your packet. We show what the potential revenue would be for a build-out of this property, which projects around $200,000 or so when you combine property tax and utility. The expected operational or maintenance of those service lines and, and streets are in the $75,000 range. So we feel that this would be a, a good, cost-effective annexation for us to consider. So that's why we have brought it back to you. Planning Commission also made the same findings earlier this, this year. So at this point, I'll just kind of stand for any questions or comments before, yeah.
Councilwoman Valdivia Alcala to be followed by Councilman Lesser.
Thank you, Mayor. I know when you initially sent it to me, because it's in my district, I had someone go over it with me. We went over it. But then I had some additional questions, maybe just one question right now. When you talk about this, the condition of the roads and where they're at right now, and if it's put into play that some road improvements are needed, at the highest end of that, what type of improvements would you be talking about for the development of these streets?
Sure. Well, in the instance of, there's two main streets that could be improved, depending on which part of this land develops first. Northwest 25th is a collector maintained by the county right now. It's a two-lane railed section, which means it's basically two lanes with ditch drainage. So we, our, our standard is to have an urban, our urban standard would be curb and gutter, sidewalk, and storm, underground storm, as well as potentially widening for, from two to three lanes. That's what the traffic study will ultimately tell us, is what, how much capacity does that road need to accommodate this development?
Okay. And then a second question, because still learning so much about how all these road projects work. Would that be something that would be put into a future CIP to be done, or you guys would just go in and do it once it was established it was needed?
Right. Good, good question. The, the A answer for any development that comes our way that involves less than an arterial road, it would be the private development pays for any impact. So if they make, if their development is causing a need for that improvement, then it is, is expected that they would pay for that. Or they would form a benefit district that multiple owners in that area would pay for that. So council can make a policy decision that we, you might want to have city participation, but our current policy would, would not, I think collector streets in this instance, I think we could contribute up to 25%. That is a policy. But I'm telling you, typically, it is on, it's on the, the private owner's nickel to get it, to get it done.
So no taxpayer money will be going into that? That would be on their dime, all of that development with curbs and gutters?
That, that's, that's correct. The only thing you're agreeing to is the maintain, whatever they, they build.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. And the reason I ask that is, again, being new, but I, I just see how much, how many people in North Topeka are, still have no curb and gutters and floods up to their front porches and in their streets and, you know, flowing all over the place and standing water. And so I just wanted to make sure that the city wasn't putting money over there when there's still this gaping hole over here. So thank you.
Understood. Thank you.
Councilman Lesser?
Yeah, Bill, a couple of questions. So this, this area then that we're talking about, basically, if it's on the southwest, so it's going to be just then to the west of the Farrell Construction Building office? Is that correct?
I, I believe so, yes. It's just west of Button Road. I think Farrell's on the, on the other side of Button.
Okay. So, so then the two questions then, so the, are the two roads for this area then going to remain then 25th and then just that front access road that comes from, from Goodyear and past the Credit Union and Hayden Tower, et cetera, et cetera?
Yes, there is a frontage road that parallels very closely to Highway 24 that would be used for access if something develops on the southern half of this property. Yes.
Okay. And what final question is, what flood, is that in the flood zone there?
Oh, the property, actually, the property, yeah, there's an Oxbow up there that has, would obviously be developed. So I think of the 74 acres, you're looking at maybe half of that would be out of the floodplain, maybe a little more than half.
Okay. Thank you.
Additional questions for Mr. Feinder? Dean Nun? Thank you.
There you go. There it is.
It's right now.
It'll be there next time, too.
And there it is. Yes, Councilwoman Hiller?
I have.
I'm sorry. I was looking at the picture.
That's okay. That's okay. I have a general question, might not apply to this one, but along the lines of Councilwoman Valdivia Alcala's question, there are a number of people that are following some of the, kind of the cutting-edge planning movements, and I'm thinking of strong towns in this case, that have pointed out that even if a developer pays for the installation of all of that, the streets, and then particularly underground storm sewer and curb and gutter and so on, that often the taxes don't support the requirement to me, the, the increased cost of maintenance of that over what it had been before. And, and really caution communities about making those conversions, especially if they're behind on keeping up with what they have. Is there any, any thought in the department right now about changing some of those requirements or policies?
Councilwoman Hiller, I believe, even though those are considered cutting-edge, you have a cutting-edge policy. 2015 was a big step for you all and the city to take in terms of recognizing what you just described, which is we can outkick our coverage very easily and get ahead of ourselves and, and have a pretty big bill to pay at a later date. And so the whole premise behind your land use and growth management plan is to develop where the infrastructure is. And if we are to, because it's already been paid for, the community paid for it, that's something that we need to return on. In the, in the cases where we have some annexation like this, this one, we have to really be very careful about any annexation that comes our way. And that's, that's why the procedure of, let's look at the cost-benefit analysis. Are we actually going to think we're going to get revenue beyond our maintenance costs? Is this going to make us more compact? Are we kind of filling back in, coming back around in? Are the services there? Are we creating any long-term costs that are not evident right now? So I feel like there's, this is a pretty careful, this wasn't always the case. So as of five years ago, I think you have the policies in place to do exactly what you want, which is to hold us to a higher accountability of where, you know, development should follow our infrastructure. And you make the decisions on the infrastructure. So as long as we, and that's, as long as we are consistent with that, you'll be consistent with your plan. So.
Thank you. I wanted to double-check that.
Sure.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you so much, Bill, for your presentation. Now we move on to the next discussion item, the non-action item, which is the zoo. If the clerk would read.
Item 6C is discussion on the governance of operations at the Topeka Zoo.
City Manager?
Thank you, Mayor. Well, we took a step back from the pursuit of the zoo governance issue back as we began the 2021 budget process. So what we're starting tonight is a series of presentations to provide the governing body, I would call it a deeper dive into the issues related to the zoo governance. We plan to pursue this over the next three or four meetings. I'm trying to remember exactly how many we've talked about. Tonight is more of a general overview and a reminder as to why we're looking at this. And Zoo Director Brendan Wiley is here to give a presentation. So Brendan?
City Manager, thank you. Mayor, members of the council, good evening. It's nice to be, it's been a long time since I've been here. It's nice to actually stand in the room. I would like to start off by making a couple introductions. Somewhere in the back are two people. One is Representative Fred Patton, who, there's Fred, who does not have his daughter...
Welcome, Representative Patton. Great to have you in the chambers.
And the other is Dinah Cox. Dinah, if you'd wave. Both Fred and Dinah serve on the Friends of the Zoo Executive Committee, and both signed up to speak tonight. But I think their intention in doing so is just to be available for any questions that you may have of the Friends of the Zoo Board. I should have pointed out that Dinah is a human resources professional who works for CAS Construction and has been a very vibrant contribution to the zoo, whatever that is. So like the city manager said, we are here to kind of rekindle a conversation, a conversation that was put on hold by pandemic. But it's interesting how pandemic kind of changes perspective. So as we rekindle this conversation, I think you're going to notice two, two different changes to the conversation. Previously, we'd always really kind of talked about this as a best practice. That's how it was presented to the city of Topeka in 2009. That's how it was presented to the City of Topeka in 2009 and we kind of continued that speaking point. But what came up at the March 3 meeting were some questions about really what's the long-term objective here? And so we're going to speak a little bit more directly to that. The other thing that we're going to speak a little bit more directly to is the, that question, what if we don't? There is, there is another side to this conversation. The other thing that actually I was asked to try to clear up by some of our staff at the zoo was apparently I like this term governance. It's a term that makes sense to me. I understand that, although it doesn't translate well to the casual observer. So while this would represent a change in governance, what this conversation is really about is it's an evaluation of the funding model that supports the Topeka Zoo. And the backbone to this conversation is a funding model conversation. Now, the other part to that conversation is this is not a breakup conversation. No party's getting rid of the other party, right? We're, we're in this together. Matter of fact, you can't break up. The City of Topeka is forever going to own the zoo. It will forever be the City of Topeka Zoo. This is just an opportunity to allow the zoo to kind of grow up, if you will, to use that kind of poor analogy of a kid growing up and, and maybe moving on in life. It's an opportunity for you to take your zoo and allow it to operate within a different funding model that allows for growth. And probably the biggest point about that analogy is what we're talking about allows the zoo to become even more of a community zoo than the way we think about it today. So I'm going to jump into this presentation and start right off the top with what is that long-term objective? And to answer this question, you can read the words on the slide if you'd like. I'm going to speak more kind of to the heart. When you look at this community and you look at successful models, one of those models that jumps right to the top is that of the Topeka-Shawnee County Public Library. Now, I don't know if this community will ever allow another model like that, but it points to an opportunity. And so if the long-term objective is coming up with a funding model that supports funding from its entire user base, which would be all of Shawnee County, then we're looking down the road at a model like a taxing district or a taxing authority. Now, we're not looking at that today. All we're looking at today is the first step in that long-term plan. Because it's that first step that in itself can be a long-term sustainable model like it's been for zoos across the country. But it also potentially opens up the conversation to the what-ifs. What could we do better? What would be more representative of the community for this community zoo? So this next slide in the presentation kind of lists out really what that long-term action like could, long-term action plan could potentially look like. But today, we're just here to talk about the first step. So that short-term objective then is to pursue a public-private partnership that has the ability to preserve the integrity of the zoo. So what the heck does that mean? And actually, that's going to be easier to answer when we get to that slide that talks about, well, what if we don't do this? What happens to the integrity of the zoo then? So just a real quick recap of this public-private partnership background. This is a conversation that started in 2009. And maybe if we had it to do over again in 2009, we would have looked at things differently. But the reality was, things were so broken at that time, we had to take a big step back and start fixing processes. And I've told the story many times before. I just don't know that I've told this story to this group. There's not a single city department that did not participate in the turnaround that this zoo experienced between 2009 and 2011. Talk about a group effort. It, it was phenomenal. But the path that we chose to go down was one that really started to lean on Friends of the Zoo. And through the years, as things have gotten tight, so to speak, it's Friends of the Zoo that the city has leaned on to pick up pieces of the organization that the city could no longer to afford. Now, we talk about Friends of the Zoo and then I also talk about really good friends to the zoo. One of those individuals recently took the time to take the legislature that created the transit authority and rewrite it in the framework of a zoological authority. And we looked at that in depth and we're going to continue to look at that in depth. But I'm not sure now is the right time to pursue that based on how interwoven the city and Friends of the Topeka Zoo have, have become. And you're going to see a little bit more about that as we move through this conversation. So why is this conversation relevant now? I want to take you back to that phrase about maintaining the integrity of the zoo. People have all sorts of memories about this zoo, whether you want to go back to the world famous Topeka Zoo, whether you want to just look at the last 10 years of which things have been mostly good. You can't get away from that question of where are we today? And today, we're not sure if we're an organization that's growing or shrinking. We know that we can build massive, beautiful new infrastructure projects, but we don't know if we can operate them. So that's the paradigm that the staff at the zoo work with under. We talk about flat budgets, but I'm not the financial person, so take this as coming from the zoo guy. There's really no such thing as a flat budget, right? Certain costs always go up. Mill levy changes value. So our staff that works at the zoo deal with compression issues. And for the last several years, they've been expected to do more in changing standards with less resources to accomplish those tasks. So that's not a new problem. The issue is that when the City of Topeka experienced those problems around 1997, 1998, and again in 2008 and 9, resources were stretched so thin that something significant finally broke. And each of those two times, the result wound up being a consent agreement with the United States Department of Agriculture. Your team that's operating the zoo today is not going to let that happen again. But the flip side to that statement that I just said is if we need to reduce to a size of a zoo that we can afford to operate, then we'll do that. But today, our current model is not sustainable. So that's, that's what we mean by maintaining the integrity of the zoo. So what's the status of this conversation? We're 11 years into it at this point. Three different occasions, Friends of the Zoo has hired a consultant for about $25,000 a time. They have not renewed that contract this time around. We do have a proposed license and management agreement that has been drafted. And we've really identified kind of those five top outstanding issues. The license and management fee. You know, we're probably about 75% to the way there. We've done all the analysis. We know what everything costs. It's just a matter of getting opinion and seeing if we can make opinion work into a contractual fee. Capital maintenance is kind of the same thing. And we're going to get much more into these first two items next week. The third is finalizing the employee matters. That's probably actually about 90% complete. Who will ensure what? We've got the background information there. I think really we're waiting to see how the conversation tonight goes. If it's positive conversation, then we'll, we'll jump back into that conversation. If not, we won't. And then finalizing an IT transition plan, we've done about as much work on that as we can do without actually contracting, without actually Friends of the Zoo contracting with their provider to replace equipment and the city canceling leases on its. So that's kind of a real quick look at the current status. So what's this kind of look like on paper? Why are we having this conversation? This is what we're loosely referring to as a functional org chart. And you don't have to read what's in every box. I just want to take you up to the top half. That's 2013. And you notice that one color's on one side, one color's on the other side. The left is city-funded operation, the right, the green, Friends of the Zoo funded operation. If you look down to the bottom of the page, that's where we are today and you'll see how the colors intermingle. That's because over the last six or seven years, as the city could no longer afford something, it's been outsourced to Friends of the Zoo who funds it. Friends of the Zoo even funds, that's not actually the right word, Friends of the Zoo employs, employees who actually report to city staff. So it's, it's a unique model, to say the least, of what we operate today. In next week, next week's presentation, you will actually see org chart of what it looks like today with people in that org chart as opposed to what it could look like as one combined organization. So today, we're not asking for you to make any decision. We're just trying to really establish the framework for what's coming next. And next Tuesday, we're really going to jump into kind of that license fee conversation. And just as a recap, a couple of considerations in that topic. One is accessibility. Whatever the admission rate is set at is going to impact accessibility to the zoo. Typically, and I say typically, I only know really three truly private zoos, private accredited zoos. Typically, there is public funding to support operations to keep admission rates at a reasonable slash accessible point. So the license fee is going to be composed of some amount of funding to offset the operation. And then the other component to that is some amount of funding to address what we call, for the sake of this presentation, capital maintenance. So we're making a differentiation between capital maintenance, which is fixing, repairing, replacing existing infrastructure. So whether it's plumbing, electric, roof, sidewalks, parking, it's stuff that's already there. We're making a distinction between capital maintenance and capital improvements. We're considering capital improvements to be new shiny stuff, whether it's a new master plan project or even on a much smaller scale, something new for like a traveling exhibit. The license fee typically funds maintenance, but not new. And our recommendation, this is more of a staff recommendation, is that we maintain that in this license fee discussion. So this slide is interesting. And I mean that at the face value of that word. It says a bunch of different things. So the, the orange line at the top, kind of what you see, that's the, the total expense to operate the zoo. It's been relatively flat since 2017. And I should point out that 2020 and 2021 in this information reflects budget. Years 2019 and earlier are actuals. So what you see at face value is that bottom line earned revenue, well, it's climbing, while the impact to the general fund, which is the yellow line in the middle, general fund support is declining. So at face value, that looks like a good thing. The total expense is fat, flat, and impact to the general fund is on the decline. The catch there is those trends are not maintainable. One means your admission rate is increasing. At the same time, you're not putting additional funding into the zoo, which we already talked about compression, which means at some point you've got to rededicate existing resources. And then you have to ask that question, does your admission rate still justify the experience? So when I use that word interesting, that's all I meant, that we've got to be cognizant of the trends that we're, we're on. So this is part one. The single slide is part one of the introduction to capital maintenance and the story of the On the left is a list of geo-bond funded items that have been part of the CIP going back to 2010. So on the right, I say that the average maintenance cost is between $338,614. The difference between the two numbers, they're both averages. But on the lower number, I took out storm drainage and I took out the quarantine building because surely those are not routine. The problem with this low average is we used to take a capital maintenance approach that was simply wait till it breaks and then replace it. And if you use that approach, you can figure that it is actually going to cost in the neighborhood of $340,000 a year. Beginning last year into this year, and at least through the length of the CIB, we're taking a different approach with capital maintenance. And that is the approach of we're going to maintain assets. We're going to fix them. We're going to repair them to extend the life so that we don't just have to wait till it breaks and replace it. The catch to that is, and we'll get into that next week, that is a more expensive plan in the near future. But in the long term, with infrastructure having a longer life, it should pay for itself. So I'm going to jump back from capital maintenance and go back to the license fee. So what's the right license fee? There's as many plausible options as, or opinions as there are people. We took three examples and tried to speak to the pros and cons of each example. So the top example, we're calling the zoo advisors model. That's the consultant that we've worked with for a number of years, who studied expenses on the City of Topeka side as well as the Friends of the Zoo side, then benchmarked those against other zoos and best practice and said two and a quarter mills would be those against other zoos and best practice, and said two and a quarter mils would be an appropriate management fee. Said a better management fee would be starting at 2.5 mils, going down to two mils over time, which is actually a hair less. I can, let me start that over. It is my opinion that this management fee is not practical today. And I'm just going to leave that there for the moment. So the next example of a license and management fee is in the middle, and we labeled that as a neutral general fund impact models. So this is taking the approach that the council has already approved in 2021, every available dollar in the general fund. So let's take what's approved for the zoo, work that into a management fee, and then see if that can work as a basis to start this license and management fee. The example below that, the negotiated fee model, is exactly what it says. Let's peggle till we get to a number. Next week, we're going to frame our license fee conversation around the middle option, the neutral impact model to the general fund. As staff, that's what we feel is the appropriate position to take, to respect the fact that you've already approved the general fund budget. Let's see if we can make this work with what's been approved. The caveat then becomes, what do you do about the capital maintenance? And we'll bring several options. And if we knew what those options exactly were today, you would see a slide about it. It's still a very much moving conversation. But we'll bring you those options to have that conversation. So in case you're wondering, there is still a pandemic going on. So why are we having this conversation? And I think the reality kind of arrived that if nothing else, COVID-19 has been a great exercise in emergency and crisis management. Never have we known more about what everything costs to operate at the zoo. And then there is that reality that, let's say, one organization or the other bottoms out and we've got to do something drastic. It doesn't matter which organization is pulling that, that string or that trigger. It's going to be the same cuts regardless. So COVID-19 doesn't have to be an obstacle. But even more so, if we can do this before the pandemic ends, positioned as a nonprofit, we will bounce back faster. When somebody asks me, what do I mean about that? So the city has already structured its budget through December 31st, 2021. If you're a nonprofit, you don't have to do that. As a smaller nonprofit, and even though we're talking about a large sum of money, at the end of the day, it is a smaller nonprofit, you get that nimble ability. You open up additional avenues to leverage funding, leverage relationships to be successful. We never really stopped during the pandemic. Our, our gates were closed for just a hair over two months, and they were two horrible months to be closed. But we never really stopped, and we never lost community trust. And as an example of that, somehow, you want to speak to a community that is strong and a community that believes that there will be a time past pandemic. Prior to pandemic on our giraffe project, we were at $3.6 million. During the pandemic to today, we're about 5.8. It's just, it makes me speechless, the support that we get from the community. So timeline, the city manager kind of spoke to that. Next Tuesday, we're going to dig deep into the license fee and the capital maintenance piece of this puzzle. We're going to do that because on the following Tuesday, October 20th, we would like to bring you something to get a consensus on. Not a vote, but just a, a show of support or no support. Because with that in place, then that conversation around the city employees can complete. And then on November 17th, we would bring to you a license and management agreement, potentially for action. The one piece that I glossed over, which every now and then I'm reminded I should pay more attention to my own presentation, is that also next week, we're going to bring the property lists and have that discussion on what do we do with the, I'm going to say this wrong, so somebody please correct me. I think I got it. What are we going to do with the personal property? You know, the office furniture, the animal toys, all the trashcans? How do we make sure that it goes to the new operator and if for some reason something fails with that operator, it comes back to the city? We are not going to talk about real property because we already know that answer. The city is going to continue to own the real property because it's the city zoo. It's your zoo, and it will forever be that. That will allow us to have that conversation about who ensures what. And while we pretty much know the answer to that today, we do need to complete the due diligence on that. So tonight, we are more than welcome to stand for any questions that you may have. What's coming over the next couple of weeks is we're really going to need your feedback on the fee associated with the license and management agreement, as well as the structure and term. And what I mean by structure, is it flat? Does it start high and decrease? Does it start low and increase? In term, we're going to propose a 10-year term. Sometimes I walk the line, but it, it's the same story to both groups. I mean, I'll be upfront that in longer term gives some stability to the contract. A shorter term is going to allow for the nonprofit to come back and say they need more money. So if it's, it's just what happens. So we're going to propose a 10-year term. Next week, we'd also like to get your feedback on the topic of capital maintenance. The following week, it's going to be really important for everyone to understand the insurance part of this proposal. And then that's going to bring us to the first council meeting, November 10th of November. You'll get to hear from Jackie Russell and Catherine Walter on the employee piece of this. I do think it's important all the time for us to maintain that or be cognizant of public perception and public engagement. And this isn't about a breakup, right? This is always going to be the city zoo. It's always going to be the community zoo. This is just an opportunity to make that even stronger. And while the license agreement specifically does not speak to this last bullet, felt like we had to include it because that's just today. We will at some point make a presentation on what the strategy will be for Friends of the Zoo to maintain contingency funding and contingency planning into the future. I should ask, is Lisa on the, I should ask or have given her the opportunity to chime in. And Lisa, if you're listening, I'm sorry I did not, but if you'd like to add anything, please.
You covered it great.
Councilwoman Hiller.
I've got a question, and it's really kind of a big one, I think. I have been through this twice, I think, deep dive at the council level as well as meetings in the course of those two rounds. And I would say you might, perhaps it's me, or maybe you're just so deeply in the details of this, I don't get what you're proposing. I need the Cliffs Notes of, of what, what this would look like in a year, what you have in mind. And, and I, I'm scrambling to keep up with it, and, and how it's different than where we left off before. Left, when we left off before, my understanding was you were looking at basically privatizing the whole thing as far as you could go. But it was still your own private fundraised money and revenue that you generated, whatever that was, under the, under the administration of, the contractor, if you would, would be the Friends of the Zoo. And everybody, all the people, and we were still talking about the animals, would, would go to Friends of the Zoo. And then we were still talking about capital improvements as well as capital maintenance. But it was, it was all private. I see some mention here now of an authority and some county money maybe, or where are we going with this?
Okay. So in a nutshell, we will prepare a Cliff Note version of the document.
Okay.
The honest answer to that is, we don't know where we're going with it, but we're creating opportunity that we don't have today. And so that, that first step is what we've always talked about, is transitioning the operation under Friends of the Zoo to operate the zoo as a 501(c)(3) nonprofit. That, that's as far as we can visualize today. Now, if it opens up future opportunities, then it does. But in our current model today, those opportunities are, are closed from us.
Understand that. I, I mean, part of what I thought I saw mentioned here was some idea of perhaps going and getting the voters to approve, like the library, that you would have a city-county tax revenue rather than just city, and that you would function more like they did. And if that's long-term, that's fine. I just, that was a new element, and I, I didn't know where that fit in your plan.
So specifically, you know, I work for the city manager who works for a city council. That's a really hard conversation for that chain of command to have. But it's not such a hard conversation for Friends of the Zoo to have. What happened at the March 3rd meeting was, for whatever reason, Councilman Dobler picked right up on that. And he made the reference, you know, something along the lines of something similar to like the library model. And while that is the pipe drain, that there's no plan, there's no real conversation, we're just focused on one step, and that's the first step to shift the operation of the zoo under Friends of the Zoo. Operate it as a 501(c)(3) nonprofit. And if the future takes us in a different direction, that first step in that future is coming right back here.
Okay. Then I have a request for next time. Similar to the conversation we just had about making capital improvements that then have to be maintained.
Yep.
If your model that you're leaning on right now is, is that you guys would raise the money to do new cool things, but we would still pay for the maintenance of those things, including capital maintenance, such as over a million dollars to just up, update and maintain the, the tropical rainforest.
Yeah.
I would like to see a couple of different models on that. I think you probably would have expected that, but.
Absolutely.
You know, it's, it's easy to raise money for, relatively, it's not easy. You guys do a great job, but it's hard. But if, if, if you've got, you've got the gross stuff, but then the maintenance falls back, that was something we talked about before, that having you all pick up on that too, whatever that threshold might be, or some things like, if you've got some options, I would like to see them when you bring it back.
We'll certainly do that. One thing that, you know, this would have been 2013-ish. We sat down with a, a very prosperous business member in the community. And he took a look at our master plan and he said, there's not one new animal in this master plan. And we acknowledged that and said, but it, it provides a makeover for the zoo. So the K. McFarland Japanese garden is a little bit outside of this conversation. But if you were to go look at the Camp Cal Bunga project, you'll see how that was a makeover. But it feels entirely new and different. But you would not imagine the amount of deferred maintenance that we knocked out with that project. So this giraffe project solves all of the deferred maintenance in the 1966 giraffe area. I would anticipate that within a couple of years, we're talking about some sort of new children's zoo. It gets rid of all that deferred maintenance. Now, before long, we're talking about 10, 12 years, and you've got more maintenance. So yes, we'll show you that model. But this new stuff that we're talking about, for the most part, you know, we're working on the existing zoo, bringing it up to date, but doing it fine.
I know that we have Councilman Duncan as well that would like to ask a few questions.
A couple of things. The first thing is, I appreciate the approach to giving us a long-term vision and some transparency. I think that's important, and I understand why you did it. I would recommend at this point that as we get into discussions, we need to make it more clear that what's in front of us today is that governance component, and that while that, at that point, whether it's a year from now or five years from now, Friends of the Zoo, if we go that way, may look at that other taxing authority, that's not what's in front of us now. And so while I appreciate that being on the tables, I think it's going to muddy the water as we move forward and confuse both, not us, but the citizens as to what we're actually considering. So I think that's part of the confusion here is that while I appreciate it's in there, since that's not what's in front of us, I think we should put that aside. Because that will be a different conversation for all of us to have whenever that's proposed. It will have to be approved by this governing body, all that exciting stuff. So that would be my recommendation. I don't know if this is appropriate, but since I know Mrs. Cox and Representative Patton are here, could they come up here? Because I kind of want to address the Friends of the Zoo, and it feels awkward saying it to Brendan, or yelling to the back of the room because you're back there. And you may want to address it, you may not, but I just have two things that are more geared towards you than they are towards him. So I wanted to, I wanted to do it that way. The first is, I said this in private, on deaf ears, I'll say it in public on deaf ears, but I'd like it on the record. I wish you would go back and have a serious conversation about having two different boards. One being a governance board who takes on this part of the operation, and then the other being that Friends of the Zoo board. And the only reason I would like you to at least have that conversation is, moving forward, the reality is, some of those conversations become political, they become bureaucratic, they, they become more problematic and harder working and in the weeds with people than what the mission of the fundraising event group is. And you can see sometimes in organizations that when it's the same group doing both, and you might have a disagreement over here, you don't want it to muddy the good work that they're trying to do over here. And so I would at least say. And so I would at least say, please, take a look at that, or maybe at a board meeting, have a conversation about it. And you can reject it, I guess, that's fine. But I just, I think that's something that could be important to consider, is my first thing.
I certainly think you're on to something. In fact, we've talked about, the zoo years ago had a zoo foundation. And it was a, I think it was a separate organization, I'm actually not sure. And it did most of the fundraising. And I think we've talked to key leaders in the community about starting back up a foundation that solely works on raising money. To be honest, right now, while Friends of the Zoo is the fundraising arm of the zoo, as you saw on the organizational chart, we do lots of the operation. And actually, our biggest fundraiser is your employee. And so it's already a muddied mess. But I get your point, and I think as we move forward, we likely will want to come up with a separate group that solely focuses on some of those big donors, and that might be a foundation of some sort.
Sure.
Again, much like the public library, you have the public library board that you all appoint people to, and then you have the library foundation board, which raises a lot of the money that, you know, funds capital projects. So you're certainly on to something, and I think we're open to that, and likely that's the route we would want to go.
And my second thing is, you, I'm going to use the pejorative of you being the Friends of the Zoo board. You have got to be more involved in these presentations, discussions, and conversations. Because at the end of the day, I, the city, we are not signing a contract with Brendan Wiley. We are being told that the governing body of this entity will be the Friends of the Zoo. And if I don't see you participating, engaged in the conversation, or have confidence that you understand what that means, are ready to dive in, and can do the job, because Brendan becomes the face who has to do all the talking, because, and chiefs heard me say this, Brendan could get hit by a bus tomorrow. And then that, we have to have some confidence that the Friends of the Zoo is ready to. And I have that, but I think it's important both for us to better understand that and the public to understand that, that you as a group are more involved in these discussions and presentations and part of this, so that, because that's, again, you will be the ones taking over. And I'll say that from my perspective, having been the president of the Board of T-PAC and some other entities, understanding the importance of that, understanding as we get into this. So that would be my only other comment.
And Councilmember Duncan, I may owe this body an apology. You know, as staff, sometimes we make decisions, and sometimes we make it with good intent, and it doesn't always play out this way. Like, for example, this past Friday, I told someone from the Capital Journal, I would not do an interview about this topic until after this meeting tonight, because we wanted the council to get the opportunity to hear it first. In similar vein, as staff, we recognize that there is a negotiation point in the future. We wanted you to hear from your staff first, because we know you're going to hear from them when it's time to negotiate. But if we can certainly undo that decision.
No, I understand that. I just wanted, that's why I wanted to express it to them. And Representative Patton heard me say this to him before COVID hit once ago, and he understood it. And everyone knows that Dunkins love the zoo. So my comments are out of love and a desire to get us to where we need to be in a constructive way. And those are just things I just think need to be, you know, talked about as we move forward.
So just to, I guess, give the FOTS answer, for years, we have been involved in this process. And again, we've hired the consultants, we've been the one, I think, driving this ship until maybe March. And in March after your meeting, for a variety of reasons, it's become the city's project. And you guys are now going through those processes of figuring out what works for you. Because, again, we were the driver, and of course, I understand that you all want to have significant input on what happens to our zoo. And so the way Brendan has framed these next couple of meetings is, it's your turn to drive for a little while, and then we get to get back together and figure out if we can come up with something that makes sense. Because as I've said every time I've talked to you guys about this, we only do this, I think, if I'm in your seat or my seat, if it makes sense for all of us, and it's the best thing for the zoo. And if it's not, then we keep operating the way we're operating. I would argue that's not an option anymore, but maybe we can, maybe you all can figure out a way to make it an option. So I am more than willing to be at the table and standing in front of this camera every meeting if you want me here. And I think that's up for you and your staff to figure out. But know that we are behind the scenes doing all we can to make sure that this is something that works for everybody.
Great. Thank you very much, appreciate it. Thank you for being here.
I know we've been having a lot of discussion, but we also had Joe Ledbetter sign up to speak.
Well, this may be, go ahead. This might be a little premature, but I've been talking to Brendan, I've been talking to some of the Friends of the Zoo for over the last year, just about ideas that they were thinking about. Because I do support the Friends of the Zoo, and I've got a lot of my relatives that just really love that zoo. So what I was thinking about was, you need a simple agreement. I think it needs to be with Friends of the Zoo. I think they need to be one board, I think they need to be the people you're going to sign off on this. They need to be a very strong board. And they have been, and that's one reason I feel comfortable with them doing it. In fact, over the last 10 years, Brendan, under his leadership, is the only city employee that, department that actually trimmed staff. He took his staff down like 10%, maybe a little more. And yet his attendance, not his, but the zoo attendance, is double from where it started 10 years ago, before COVID. And I know it's going to come back. So we all know this is going to end someday. But I feel very comfortable with a two-mill subsidy for 10 years. They can take over the maintenance, surely they can fundraise to take care of maintenance. I know I'm saying a lot, I'm just throwing out ideas. This is what, I think, a nice, simple agreement that they can live with, with the goal of they become completely independent at the end of 10 years, a separate body under the wing of the county, under the wing of the city, but whatever, they are able to do their own complete budget after that. And I think that they should have all the revenues that are generated in the park, including the gate during that whole time. It's their incentive to raise money and make money. And people will support the zoo, they're not going to give money to the city, they're just not. So I think that if it's FOTS, if it's that organization, and this is just me, from my observations of them over the years, I think that they're capable, if you get the right plan together. And I think they'll do a good job. And, but again, you'll put the right things into the contract, you'll have the ownership. You do need to specify that they do have the quiet enjoyment of that property, because Parks and Rec experienced not having the quiet enjoyment of their property that they leased from the zoo last year, when there was a pit dug in the middle of the park without any notice. But who's counting? I would also want to make sure that they're not having to take over any bond obligations. I think those were generated by the city, and the city should pay those. Of course, I'm a big proponent of reducing our bond indebtedness over the years, but I think we do that first by stop borrowing so much. And that's how you curb your bond indebtedness. Those are just my thoughts. There's many others that probably have better thoughts than I do, but that's just a basis of kind of what I was thinking, a starting point. Okay? Thank you.
Additional comments or questions from the staff, from the team to the FOTS team? Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. This is either for Mr. Patton, or, I should say, Representative Patton, or Mr. Wiley. Karen, sorry, I was calling Karen for right now. She had asked about the countywide thing. We're having trouble hearing the audio sometimes, so I didn't hear what she said. Is it, for right now, I take it, it'd be too complex to try to do, try to get something countywide in short order correct, but perhaps have something in the future, is that right? Could you please maybe repeat what you said earlier?
Yes, Councilman, just to summarize, I think that is what Brendan said. Certainly, that's an option that people have brought forward, including some of you, that at some point in time, that's explored. But there's a lot of steps to go through to make that happen. We think this is a good first step to do the governance model change. And then we collectively can continue to work on, are there other models that spread that tax burden out and are better positioned our zoo for success? So not in the short term, you've got to get legislation and other things passed. So certainly, we think that's something we should look at. We've had conversations with the library about how they've set themselves up. But that's not a short-term solution.
Additional comments or questions? Okay. Seems that there are no more. Again, we are going to, like Brendan said, talk about this a little bit more and get a little bit deeper into the financial modeling in the next meeting. At this point in time, if there is no other items for the zoo's team, Representative Patton, always a pleasure to have you with us on the council. Thank you so much. We then would move on to the public comments. And the first person signed up to speak is Chris Deister.
I don't think he's here, Mayor.
Okay. Next person signed up to speak is Rhonda Hubbard. Rhonda Hubbard?
Check out in the hall. Did we miss the first person? What was the first name again, Mayor?
Chris, Chris Deister?
Deister.
Deister, I am sorry.
Ten-four.
Okay, no, we don't have Chris. And then the next one was?
Rhonda Hubbard?
Doesn't look like she's here, Mayor.
Okay, Neil Carlson.
Good evening. I'm Neil Carlson, I'm the owner of Plumbing by Carlson in Topeka. I'm here to speak to the amendments made by the council to the plumbing code. I am here also representing the Mechanical Contract Association of Kansas. And I'm a 37-year member of the plumbing board here in Topeka. I'm the old guy. We discussed the amendment, we discussed the change at plumbing board meeting in January. We had a good discussion, and we tabled further action while I was doing some investigation, other people were doing some investigation into other cities and what was going on. Mr. Shetland made that presentation to us, and he said that all of the big boys were in favor of it. Well, I'm not a big boy, but the Mechanical Contract Association represents the big boys, represents the union contractors. And I have had discussion with McElroy's, Dan Beal, piping contractors, Steve Brown, and P1, Smitty Belcher. And all of them do not want this change. You have all been informed by Mr. Brogan with email on proposals to rescind and re-study the matter. And the Mechanical Contract Association is in accordance with that agreement, or with that email. And that's all I had to say. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Mr. Carlson. Marlena Michner.
Hello, my name is Marlena. I want to thank you, Madam Mayor and Council, for allowing me the opportunity to speak to you guys today. To talk about a situation that happened with my 14-year-old son on September 19th. There was an interaction between him and a police officer, there was a use of force involved. And first, I'd kind of like to tell you a little bit about Isaiah and what kind of kid he is. He's very loving, he's very kind, he's very helpful. He's involved with church, helping people at church. He used to help feed the neighborhood with the church that he went to before COVID-19 started. He's the kind of kid that would give the shirt off of his back to help somebody. He is also autistic. It's such a wide, autism is such a wide spectrum, it's such a large spectrum, there's so many things that are different, you know, about different children with autism. For Isaiah, his autism looks like missing social cues, not understanding all the time the way that people are approaching him, or, you know, why people are talking to him the way that they are, you know. But he's very intelligent, he's an A student, you know, he's just, overall, he is a very good kid. And on September 19th, when he had the interaction with the police officer, he had been given a lawful order to return his dog home, because she was, or to get his dog on a leash, I apologize, which he was attempting to do. He was attempting to get Bella home, so that he could get her, you know, in the yard safely where she was supposed to be. And he was contacted a total of three times by the same officer in less than 10 minutes. From the very first interaction with the police officer, the police officer was very aggressive, came across very angry. And for Isaiah, already having a fear of police officers, because he is brown, because he does watch the news, because he does see the things that happen, when the officer came out of the car in an aggressive manner, never approaching him with one shred of compassion at all, Isaiah became very fearful, very, very fearful, because he didn't understand why the officer was so angry from the very beginning. As the interactions took place, it just continued to escalate the situation. By the final interaction, Isaiah had complied with the police officer's orders. Our dog was in our yard, Isaiah was stepping into the street to return the neighbor's dog home, when he was then pulled over by the police officer for being a pedestrian in the roadway. And at this point, he really couldn't understand what was happening, because he did what he was asked to do. And, you know, it was no longer an issue of the dog, because the dog was where she was supposed to be. And the police officer, you know, came out, told him that he was being detained. And my 14-year-old son.
Ma'am, how many more minutes do you need?
May I have about two, please?
Let's give her three. I can see that she's emotionally shaken. Let's, could we have that motion to extend? Councilwoman Nager, Councilman Dobler, seconds. Roll call, please.
Mayor Deila Isla?
Yes.
Councilmembers Hiller?
Yes.
Valdivia Akala?
Yes.
Ortiz? Emerson?
Yes.
Emerson? Okay, Padilla?
Yes.
Nager?
Yes.
Dobler?
Yes.
Duncan?
Yes.
And Lesser?
Yes.
We have nine yes.
Ma'am, you may proceed, you have three more minutes.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and Council, I appreciate it. At this point, my 14-year-old son braced himself because he thought that he was going to be shot over stepping into the street in front of his own home. And I come here to say that And I come here to say that to ask that we provide more training to our police officers in, you know, whether it's sensitivity training, autism training, overall mental health training, to help our police officers understand that approaching people with, with, with some compassion can change the entire way that a situation goes, you know. Had, had, in, in, in my son's situation, had he approached my son with just the smallest amount of compassion, the whole situation would have turned out completely differently. But from the moment that the police officer stepped out of the car and Isaiah seen the aggression, everything that he did from that point on was out of fear. He responded out of fear because he didn't know what else to do. And I just think training is so important and finding a way to, to work that in for them so that they do know, you know, how to approach situations like that, so that things like this don't happen to Isaiah or another one of my kids or somebody else's child. You know, it's, it's just so important that our, you know. Thank you for your time and thank you for letting me speak.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
The next person signed up to speak is Mr. Joseph Ledbetter.
I'm away by right. On behalf of Mr. Lessin.
Mr. Ledbetter would like to pass on his comment.
Okay. I'm looking at the list of new people. The next person to speak is Russell Ridgway.
I can take this home. Thank you, Board. My name's Russell Ridgway. I'm the business representative for the Plumbers and Pipefellers Union here in Topeka, Kansas. And I'm here over the recent revisions done to the plumbing code. This is going to affect the licensed plumbers here in Topeka, this change. It's going to affect the, the welfare and it's going to affect the, the safety and health and well-being of people with these codes. The, the codes were set by competent master plumbers, mechanical engineers and contractors. And these codes can't be changed through a city council. It, it has to be done by, tabled by competent people in order to do this. Anyway, that's pretty much all I have to say right now. I just voicing my disdain for this.
Thank you for your comments. The next person signed up to speak is Craig Duke?
No, he's not going to be speaking. He was there for the presentation earlier, the same with Todd Harrison.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry. I was just like looking at the letter. Then the next person signed up to speak is Dave Cobbler.
Hello, my name's Dave Cobbler. I'm the owner of Ace Plumbing Company, Topeka Lawrence. I'm here, obviously, to talk about this amendment line excavator, excavating contractors authority as utility contractors to do water and sewer line replacements and repair and commercial installs on private property. So I'm asking for this rescinding and rewriting of the piece of middle of this amendment. It's my understanding that this, there was a motion made on this amendment. I think it was by Mr. Emerson and it was brought up and approved the same night. If I'm wrong about that, I apologize. But this is way too important to rubber stamp it through in the first night. There's so many things to discuss as to why licensed plumbing contractors should be doing this type of work and then why excavators have their type of work and, and, and when they lay sewer lines at, oh, for years and when subdivisions are put together, commercial buildings are pulled together, excavators have been allowed to install sewer lines. And either the engineers, the architects are inspecting these jobs and making sure they're done properly. On the other hand, when it comes time to put sewer from that city sewer to the building sewer, that's done by licensed city of Topeka plumbing contractors. You should be a master plumber or a journeyman plumbers. So one of the issues there is he's just, these, these folks aren't licensed, I don't believe. And if you're going to allow excavators to do this type of work, then you need to think about having them acquire plumbing licenses as well. So that's certainly one thing needs to be talked about. I think Mr. Dobler mentioned at one time that he couldn't understand why an excavating contractor shouldn't be or couldn't be allowed to install sewer lines when they do it in public utilities all the time. Well, there's several answers to that one. But one of them, one of them would be they already have their jobs. They have utility jobs. They've been doing this work for years. Plumbers haven't been going out trying to take their work. And I don't think there's, plumbers are upset with excavators. I'm not, I have a lot of friends in that business. But the point is, we go to plumbing school, we have four years apprenticeship, we had four years in my day anyway, to four years apprenticeship before you could be a journeyman, four, four years journeyman before master. And to just let excavators go and pit these sewers is silly. You need to talk about it. But it needs to be more discussion. And that's what we're asking you to do is to, to, to please rescind this thing and let's, let's talk about it, to talk about it in a little more detail where you, you guys can maybe understand. But the, the fact that licensed plumbers have the liability, the city has another issue here. When we go put a sewer line into McDonald's restaurant today and there's a problem with that, sewer breaks down. McDonald's can call Ace Plumbing. Our sewers wouldn't break down, but most of our other plumbers wouldn't either. But the point is, you can call us and it's up to us to take care of it. If the city's going to start letting utility companies run private sewer lines and then this sewer breaks down, is the city going to send out their, their city sewer department to clean it?
Mr. Cobbler?
So there's an issue.
Time expired. Do you need an extension?
Uh, no, I, I don't think so. Just, I, I really would ask that you rescind that and let us all talk about it. It needs to be talked about longer than four minutes, so, thanks.
Thank you, sir. At this point in time, there is no other individuals signed up for public comment. We move on to the announcements. City Clerk?
Yes, for the October thirteenth, twenty twenty agenda, there is a mayoral proclamation and there are three board appointments as well as two presentations. The first is a Troy's Froggen's Awards and the second is the City of Topeka Health Plan Overview. For the consent agenda, there are routine items, two routine items. Action items include an ordinance for six-zero North Annexation located at Northwest Twenty-Fifth, Fifth Street. Second item is an ordinance, a zoning change located at three-four-four-zero Southeast Twenty-Ninth Street. Item C is an ordinance, zoning change for Stormont Vale Healthcare located at seven-hundred Southwest Washburn Avenue. Next item is a final flat Timber Ridge subdivision change located at Southwest Fifty-third Street. Next item is a labor agreement for twenty-twenty-one to twenty-twenty-two AFT Kansas Local Six-Four-Zero-Six. And the next item is approval of the twenty-twenty-one special alcohol grant recommendations. And for the non-action item, it's a continued discussion of the zoo governance and it will be the financial approach.
Thank you very much, City Manager.
I have nothing to add tonight, Mayor.
Councilwoman Valdivia Akala?
Thank you, Mayor. I have two things tonight. As City Manager, I am introducing an ordinance for the implementation of the civilian review board that I submitted to the city attorney's office. I am requesting that this ordinance be added to the agenda on October twentieth for discussion and a vote. A copy for governing bodies review will be available at the end of the week. City Attorney, if you can please make this available when it's ready with the little tweaks that are being done, I would appreciate that you send this out to the governing body. Will that work?
Yes, can certainly do that.
Okay. Thank you. And City Attorney, I also have a question for you. I put a request by email to you to determine if Deputy Mayor Emerson had a conflict of interest bringing forth and voting on the addendum to the two thousand and eighteen Uniform Plumbing Code. This request had to do with Deputy Emerson's company and his contracting work with the City of Topeka. And that had come up for discussion during public comment. During this time, on the, on his council seat, it appears that the deputy mayor's business has been paid by the city taxpayer dollars, anywhere from six to seven million dollars, maybe more. So two questions I have concerning that email that you responded on. Why was your email response marked confidential when it was sent out to the governing body? That's number one question. Number two, you stated that there was no conflict of interest on this vote, yet my request to you asked about all votes since Mr. Emerson has been seated on council that may have produced a conflict of interest. I want to understand why I was not provided this information. For a more thorough answer, if one cannot be given by you, City Attorney, then perhaps the Governmental Ethics Commission can provide. So if you could let me know either tonight or through an email, I would appreciate it. That's all I have. Thank you.
Councilwoman Ortiz?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. As you all know, October is my favorite month because it's Fire Prevention Week. And everybody should have a packet like this. And if you look in it, this year is fire safety in the kitchen. We were told that. But it has some interesting other things in there besides an application for a free smoke detector. So I know COVID's here and if you're able to fill this out so we can get this to our firefighters so they can come out, the experts come out to your house and check your fire detectors to make sure that your family and your loved ones and your pets are safe. It also has some other tips on a checklist, tornado checklist. So they've done a little bit more this year. And if you continue to read it, it's also in Spanish. And I think that's great as well that we can send this around. We have smoke detectors, free smoke detectors that we cannot give away. And that's really, really sad. And that's why I pushed this this whole month of October. And also, I know in my district and other districts as well, there's houses that are close together, the wiring is bad, the load of modern income. This serves everybody, anybody that wants it, the firefighters, the professionals, they come out and they put up your smoke detectors in the places that they need it the most. And with us needing another fire station and fire stations being shut down due to the manpower, this just helps them. This is another tool, a free tool that doesn't cost anybody anything to help them. And trust and believe, these smoke detectors, they do work. And these smoke detectors are nine years, so you don't have to replace them until every nine years. And so just think about that. I had a fire in my house. Luckily, the firefighters came in, they put it out, it just detained my bedroom. But I've seen worse. And if you look in our emails and on the news here lately, we've had tons of fires, tons of fires in the garage and other places. Because, you know, people don't think we need to put them in the garage. Well, let's let our experts do their job. Let's let them do their job and come out. So, hand a banana, I hope that you can get this filled in and send it out. And trust and believe, I will be like the school teacher. I will be checking and to see who's done it and I will be hounding you. I know that some of the previous council members, they say that they do it and then I check and then they don't and then they, they get it done. So Spencer, I know you don't want to hear my mouth, so, so get this out there, get this out there. We had a council member, Bill Haines, and, you know, he was glad that I pushed this because he did make that call and he didn't think he needed a smoke detector in his family room. And guess what? They came out and they put it in, in his family room. So he was real pleased with that because he too had a fire. So anyway, I, I just wanted, wanted to say that. And don't forget, all the buses are running. We've got kids going to school half-time. It's a crazy, crazy, crazy schedule. One day they're remote, next day they're half a day, but we're trying to do the best that we can. So just kind of look out for the kiddos out there that are walking. And that's all I have. Tony, I'd like for you to call me. Deputy Mayor, I'd like to see about getting along. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Deputy Mayor? Deputy Mayor?
Madam Mayor, he had messaged us earlier that he's on the phone.
Oh, yes, he lost connection. I did get that message. Okay, so we'll move on to District Five. Councilwoman Padilla?
Can, can you hear me okay now?
Yes, we can, sir.
Well, I, I'd hate for you to miss out on anything I'm saying here tonight, as I'm sure you would too. Actually, Ms. Ortiz and I, yesterday, we had the great honor of being up at Hillcrest when the remodeled Hillcrest Community Center was opened. And it was beautiful. The county commissioners were there as well, as was, as was Mr. Ledbetter and other members of the Parks Recreation Board. City and company did the work and they did a magnificent job. It's just a fantastic thing for, for southeast Topeka. I also saw several members of the governing body as well as Mr. Trout on a Saturday morning at the women cutting over in Highcrest. But that is in Mr. Padilla's district, so I'm going to defer that to him. Great things happening in southeast Topeka. Thanks.
Councilwoman Padilla?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Tony, for bringing that up. Yeah, I, I appreciated the turnout there. It was good turnout. That house really is really fantastic. And to have it sitting right next to another house that sent, had put, put out there for sale and has been sold, it really is doing a lot to change the landscape of that area right across from the, from Betty Phillips Park. So I, I commend them for all the work that they do. I don't want to take a lot of time. I do want to, I'll cut short my commercial for the census because people are probably tired of hearing it from me, but we still have some time to do, to complete the census and meet those numbers. But I do also, I want to mention that I sent to city members today a link and I hope that you'll be able to follow it. And that's just an informational link so that you can take a look at it and get some information. If you're interested on some of the things that come up during Hispanic Heritage Month, it gives some people a little more insight. It's not about just the Fiesta and a few things like that. There's a long history of Mexican-Americans in the city of Topeka and Hispanics generally. There's a long history of Mexican-Americans in the city of Topeka and Hispanics generally. They are a very active group of people in this community. Look at this council, and you can see for yourself that we get involved. Just recently, an old schoolmate friend of mine, Andrew Valdivia, was selected by Arts Connect to receive the Glenn Taylor Visual Arts Award. And you can see his work around the city of Topeka. And again, it's that influence from his upbringing and his culture. And we have the longtime presence of Lulac in our community, serving the Hispanic community. And I want to take a time to appreciate all the work that has been done by our Hispanic community in Topeka, making it a wonderful culturally diverse place to live and inviting everyone to anything and everything we host. So thank you, Mayor.
Councilwoman Nager.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Our Latinx council members are really getting the job done, and I'm very thankful for their contribution to what we do. Also, just for Padilla's sake, make sure you're filling out the census. Make sure you're being a part of this very important way to keep track of where we are and where we need dollars. Because as we have said many times before, it's instrumental to making sure that we are able to provide the services that we really, truly need in the city. What I really want to focus on tonight is that there are a lot of voting deadlines coming up. And with working with the Shawnee County Elections Commission, please be sure that you are ready to vote in this upcoming election on November 3rd. It's so important that I got special shoes just for this occasion. So the last day to register to vote in Shawnee County is October 13th. The first day that advanced voting ballots are going to be mailed out is October 14th, so just turning right around. And early voting starts as early as October 19th. These are coming up very, very soon because, I don't know about you, I'm surprised it's October. Please get on this as soon as possible. You can get ahold of the Shawnee County Elections Office by just Googling it. That was the easiest way for me to get there. But you can also go to the Shawnee County's website, snco.us/election. And please get registered to vote. Please invite your friends and family to register to vote because this is truly important. Because you want to make sure that your voice is heard and your values are being represented at every level of government. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
By the way, I caught that Hamilton reference. Councilman Dobler.
Thank you, Mayor. Hey, I just want to take a minute and point out, you know, it sounds bad, I guess, when you point out in public that a council member has been paid $7 million or whatever by the city of Topeka. Certainly, we are all free to ask for any information from city staff that we would like to. But just for folks that are listening, Mr. Emerson is in a business that requires a low bid for him to get work with the city of Topeka. It's a competitive business, and I don't really think there's any way he can influence that decision. It's the lowest number, and that's how he gets work with the city of Topeka. Thank you very much, Mayor.
Councilman Duncan.
I have nothing this evening. Thank you.
Councilman Lesser.
No, the only thing I have too is many of us that want to come on council own our own businesses. And we sign a disclosure of acting ethically in what we're doing. But it also doesn't say that we don't have a right to still make a living. And there's a lot of honorable people in this world that I know, and Tony Emerson is about as high as it is on that list to me. And I'll just leave it at that. Thank you.
Councilwoman Hiller.
Thank you, Mayor. Wanted to do a shout-out to downtown. I went downtown on Friday night, I think it was, to see It Takes Village, the dance troupe dancing on the stage on the plaza, and it was just magical. And I don't know about others, but I'm sort of a junkie for the fountain shows that are starting at 8:15 frequently and sometimes are running midday as well. So I recommend that. As council, a couple people mentioned, I did go the next morning to the Housewarming at Scent. And I'll tell you, I think what excites me is that what's happening in Highcrest with Scent is, to me, the way redevelopment and neighborhood engagement should happen. And the house that was rehabbed is a house that was there the whole time, next door to the house that was built and dedicated about a year ago. And I remember going through that one. And there, they designed it so that it's unique and exciting, yet it still fits into that longstanding neighborhood of Highcrest. And I walked through the house that is now finished that same day and saw the demo underway, the internal demo underway. And to come back and see how livable and exciting that home and yard are. They sold it, I guess, that day or the next day for $75,000. All the engagement of the people involved in the nonprofit organization Scent, as well as the neighbor next door to the north hanging out. He'd been helping in the yard and helping move stuff around to get it ready, and that's building neighborhood. Jonathan Sublet, who heads that organization, made a statement the next day, and I won't be able to say it exactly because I'm not good at that, but basically said that one of the goals of that organization is to change a neighborhood, the way people see that neighborhood, instead of it just being somewhere where they're at, as to into someplace they want to be. And I think that's the essence of what we want to do. And I will mention on the side of that that I once again appreciate this council supporting the motion that I made now a couple of months ago to see an actual implementation plan for affordable housing once the housing study was done, and also to set aside the consolidated plan. And I have, at this point, been meeting weekly with representatives of our neighborhoods. And what is emerging from those conversations is really creative, from the street up, suggestions for how to, whether it's the new money from the affordable housing money or even what's been traditionally in the consolidated plan, to make it much more available to people in neighborhoods so that they can make strategic investments in their blocks and with their neighbors. They also have been in the process of putting together some recommendations, just sort of identifying what they feel the neighborhoods need from the city in terms of community engagement to help them grow, both in terms of engagement, in terms of affordable housing, in terms of infrastructure. Some time ago, we've had discussions at this level about changing sort so that it was much more accessible, and they are doing research in terms of what's happened in other communities, but just really evaluating what's worked and what hasn't worked here. It's kind of a combination of people who've been around a long time and people who are new to being active in the neighborhoods. So I look forward to bringing some of that forward. They're working very hard. And we will keep on doing that. Also, nobody else has mentioned it, but I'm honored and, you know, a little nervous, but honored and more than willing to serve on the new Special Council Committee on Police and Community. And that group did have its organizational meeting on Monday, yesterday, this week. I'm serving with Councilwoman Padilla, and Councilwoman Ortiz was elected chair. And the group did go through a pretty thorough laundry list of all the different issues that have come up regarding policing and race and community, and chose to get started on the use of force issues. So there will be, I guess, additional outreach to let people know exactly what's going on. The police department is being represented by Captain Halton, and they'll be providing data and research for the committee. The committee is pretty determined to make sure we know what issues have occurred in Topeka, not someplace else, but Topeka, and what are the facts, and what is the training? If there's been profiling, exactly what's happened, whether it's been turned in or not. Sometimes people don't report it, but it appears to be there, and so we want to know. Then to look at administrative policies and procedures as well. Councilwoman Ortiz has taken a very thorough approach to how we would address those issues, and I appreciate her leadership. And we'll see where we go from there. And we've set a second meeting for, I believe it's the 26th of this month to keep moving. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Mayor?
Yes, Councilwoman.
I just need to mention one more thing. Part of what brought this all up tonight was that there was a flurry of emails this afternoon about rescinding, not rescinding, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. And I watched all of this flow by, back and forth. I found it very interesting that there was a councilperson that stated that the Topeka Plumbing Board specifically did not approve this because they knew their livelihood was at stake. He was quoting that in an email. So the councilman goes on to say, "So no consideration of what is best for the community, only what is best for a certain group of businesses." Well, let me tell you, for those that weren't here, there were about 30 vehicles on both sides of the street of plumbers, mid-range plumbers, average plumbers. And there was about 30 to 40 plumbers outside of here who I'm sure are just wanting to make a living like everybody else. And I think that it speaks to perhaps an out-of-touch mode when there is guilt trip that is put on these plumbers for coming forth, where they should be sacrificing their livelihood for others' livelihood or for what's best for the city of Topeka. So I just want to point that out and make sure that that's on the record. Thank you, Mayor.
We're going to recess for five minutes before we go into our executive session.
I'd like to, is this just going to come a free-for-all, Mayor? Are we just, is that what this is going to be? I mean, how many accusations are we going to get to just throw out there against? I mean, that gives Neil right there. So who's next? Me? Am I next? You next?
Councilmember, what I would recommend is that we have an executive session to discuss non-employee personnel matters. But the request that I will have from now on is typically the announcements portion of the evening. It is not meant to be directed at any one individual in the council. So we will make sure that we are going to follow that procedure as well during that time. Councilwoman Ortiz.
Thank you. And I believe in our rules, Lisa's still on there. I believe in our rules that state that we're not to go back and forth with the people that come to the podium. And I know we're getting real relaxed on that, on asking them all these questions and stuff like that. I believe that's in our rules, is it not, Lisa?
It is, actually, Councilmember Ortiz. The other rule I think that folks were referring to is that members of the governing body and staff and members of the public treat each other with respect. Maybe that's, you know, part of what, you know, the issue is. But you're correct, Councilmember Ortiz. When folks come up for public comment, it's really not a question-and-answer session. I know that there's been some latitude on that, and, you know, that's okay if it works.
If I may, I was going to look at that off the record. But since we're talking about that, I wanted to bring that up because I'm going to start interjecting point of order, and that's a point of order. A point of order, the definition for that is when it's out of sequence with your agenda. And we have been doing that. We have been letting people come to the podium, and then we're back and forth and back and forth with questions, and do you want this? Can this person? Why do we have council rules if we're not going to follow them? Why do we have them? Is it going to be a free-for-all? Because this, you know, I'm a real stickler, a real stickler about let's follow the agenda and let's follow the rules. So now that that's been pointed out, Lisa, if you can send that to me, I would like to send that to my colleagues to remind them that that is a point of order, that we are out of order when we've been doing that, and that's been relaxed. And I think we need to tighten up on that, as well as the rest of it. Because it just really makes us look so terrible. It just makes us, there's a time and a place for everything. And just to throw it out there on the agenda, I don't think that's the time nor the place. And I think we need to let some of these new council members know this is the order it is, and these are the rules. If we're not going to follow the rules, why are we going to have them? If you want to change them, bring them forth, and let's change them, but let's go by protocol. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Councilwoman. At this point in time, we do have a recess of five minutes. Lisa, do you want to put forth the executive session order?
Yes, Chair, I could do that. The motion is to recess into executive session for a period of time not to exceed 15 minutes to discuss upcoming employer-employee negotiations as justified by KSA 75-4319B3. In order to aid the discussion, the following individuals should be present: Members of the governing body, City Manager Brent Trout, Administrative and Financial Services Director Jessica Lamandola, Human Resources Director Jackie Russell, Senior Assistant City Attorney Catherine Walter, Budget Managers Steve Wade and myself. No action is anticipated to be taken when the open meeting resumes in the governing body chambers.
Do we have a motion to enter into the executive session? Councilwoman Padilla makes the motion. Do we have a second? Councilwoman Lesser seconds. All those in favor, now we vote the roll call.
Mayor DeLausla.
Yes.
Councilmember Hiller.
Yes.
Valdivia Akala.
Yes.
Ortiz.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Padilla.
Yes.
Nager.
Yes.
Dobler.
Yes.
Duncan. And Lesser.
Yes.
We have 10 yes.
Okay, we will recess for five minutes, and then we'll come back to reconvene. This will allow the chambers to empty and for the council members to have a recess. Okay, we're ready, Mayor, whenever you are. Okay, the executive meeting has ended. Are there any other items before the body? Seeing none, we adjourn this meeting. Thank you very much for attending.